Good evening, welcome to.
Try that, yep. Good evening. Welcome to the January 28th, 2025 meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. The city clerk could please take the roll.
Floem.
Aye.
Bulo.
Here.
Stevenson.
Here.
Mr. Nichols is absent and excused. Larson?
Here.
Esslinger?
Here.
Mugawar?
Here.
We have six present.
Leading us in the invocation this evening will be councilmember Floem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we gather tonight, we are grateful for the good things that have come to the city. May our decisions always be ones that are for the well-being of all who we govern.
Now, tonight, we have the honor of having students from Menominee Elementary School. Students, if you wouldn't mind meeting me right up front here for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Very nicely done. If you guys can turn around. I want to thank you all for coming tonight. We have, as I mentioned, students from Menominee Elementary School with us. We have Charlotte Burnt right here. There we go. We have Claire Burnt as well. And we have Kasich and Amita also from Menominee Elementary. As I said, thank you for coming and leading us in the pledge. Maybe if you'd like to, why don't you tell us who your teacher is there at Menominee and if you have a favorite subject as well.
Hello, my name is Kasich. My, I'm in fifth grade. My teacher's name is Ms. Jaeger, and my favorite subject is math.
My name is Charlotte, and my favorite subject is math, and my teacher is Ms. Pacan.
My name is Claire, and my favorite subject's math, and my teacher's Ms. Becker.
Well, thank you for doing so. Appreciate you coming and helping us with the pledge. Next up, we have citizen statements to council. I only have one person registered to speak on anything tonight. Mr. Mickelson, is it for citizen statements or something else? Perfect. Welcome, come on up.
Good evening.
Evening, welcome.
Is that on?
Yep.
Matt Mickelson, I live at 906 Winnebago Avenue in Oshkosh. I'm actually coming here, there was a vote a couple of weeks ago about having a public meeting to help explain what happened with taxes. Mr. Larson, there was an article that you, or not say that you wrote to explain it. Some of it was over my head. It was much appreciated. From what I understand, there was three votes against the public meeting for citizens to come in and to be able to have discussion and hopefully learn more about what happened. Me as the landlord, we have seven properties. My taxes went up over 20% on average on those. There are things that I don't understand, and it's bothersome to me that you as a council, that the members that voted against the meeting, wouldn't want to take the time to help us, the citizens, understand what happened and what we can do to make this better, and also what to do looking forward to prepare for this. So I would hope that each of you would take the time to seriously consider about this meeting so we, the citizens, can understand better. There's already so much that gets missed. I saw a post on Facebook, somebody complaining, or not complaining, but questioning, what's this wheel tax thing? And that's just, there's a lack. I think the city does okay on putting information out there, but I don't think there can be enough. And, you know, truthfully, a lot of citizens don't step up to take more initiative to understand. But the ones that do, like me in this moment, we want to learn and understand as much as we can. And I heard about the video. The problem with the video is, sorry, I'm going to pick on you. I truly appreciated your essay. I thought it was great. But if there's questions there, how do I ask, hey, I didn't understand that. Can you tweak that a little? What does that word mean? And the video just doesn't do it for me. So, okay.
Thank you very much. I have no one else registered to speak to council tonight, so we'll move on to consent agenda. I have no one registered to any consent agenda items either, so I'll take a motion and a second on consent.
So moved to second.
Any discussion? Councilmember Esslinger?
Yeah, Mayor, I would like to remove Resolution 25-26, just for purposes of discussion, please.
No problem at all, 25-26. Any discussion on any other resolutions? If not, city clerk, if you'll take the role on consent minus 25-26.
Floem.
Aye.
Bulo.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Carried six.
Resolution 25-26, approve general development plan amendment and specific implementation plan amendment. For modifications, through Sunny View Expo Center at 500 County Road Y, Plan Commission recommends approval. I can get a motion and a second for that.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Esslinger.
Thank you, Mayor. The reason I pulled this is, just wanted to have a brief discussion. I'm in favor of everything that's in here. I read it over. There are several base standard modifications that are being asked for in regards to signs on the property. Now, it's my, my belief that the people that are involved in doing this upgrade know what they need, and some of the signs, the amount of signs, signs and the setbacks fall outside of those parameters, and that happens. And I think that the reasoning that they've put forward is reasonable. And so I'm in favor of that. The issue that I have is, at Plan Commission meetings, and a couple of weeks ago, we had a variance that was being asked for from Chili's that literally wanted to move a sign back a couple of feet and put it 35 feet in the air, and that was voted down. And I guess some staff members, councilmembers, had a lot of heartburn with that issue, because I think the issue was, we must remain consistent with the codes. Well, where are we remaining consistent with the codes if we are going to issue these base standard modifications? And there are several of them here. This isn't just for one sign. They want four signs. Code is for one. Four EMCs, code is for one. Various setback requirements that don't meet the 30, 30 feet that's on here. And again, I don't have any problem with these, but we should be consistent with our inconsistencies. I don't understand how some people get, I don't say special treatment, that's not correct, but to me, I didn't understand what the Chili's, if there was any harm being done to the community or to the neighboring businesses there. I do understand, and I, again, approve of what they want to do here. It makes perfect sense, but I think we just need to evaluate why we're consistently inconsistent with these. If someone wants, I don't know if that's a rhetorical question or a statement, but if someone wants to reply to that, that's fine.
Would you like, me too?
Go for it.
Okay.
That works if you'd like.
Well, first of all, there are two different zoning districts. So the way that we enforce the code in those two different districts are going to be completely different. For the example with Chili's, a lot of consideration went into it being a corridor, and then the existing signs that were out there, especially the new ones that we did approve since our 2017 zoning code update. Those are some of the big reasons why, you know, we did recommend that, you know, it is set back and it is a certain height. For the Sunny View Expo Center, that is a unique site where it has multiple entrances, and at times they have multiple events going on. So they would like to have signage to direct people, you know, go to exit or, you know, entrance, A, B, C, 1, 2, 3, whatever they name it, so they can easily, you know, direct people to the different areas. We did that somewhat similarly with Crossroads out on 41, knowing it's sort of a big event arena type place where they have a lot of folks coming in that aren't familiar with the area. So that was some of the reasoning why, you know, this, the Sunny View Expo Center is a little bit different than Chili's. And then the other thing is, you know, just the allowance of sign codes. You know, Chili has other signs that they had on their building, or like the Expo Center, you know, that's all, those buildings are pushed in the back, so they don't have all this other, you know, signage. It's more just the entrances. So that, that was kind of some of the big differences of, you know, those two different projects.
Okay. And quite frankly, I think that is an excellent answer. The only issue, again, I have is, if we're using the, I don't want to see argument, that's not the wrong, if we're using the logic or rationale that we should remain consistent, it shouldn't matter where the zoning is or what the zoning is, the rules are the rules. And again, I think that different circumstances are fine for these modifications. But if we're saying that we need to remain consistent, then let's remain consistent.
I understand, yeah. And just to add, the height for the, the signs, the EMCs that are being proposed for the Sunny View, those met cold. So the setbacks, as I understand, so with Chili's, we let them have the setback, they were within the setback area, but the height was a little bit lower. So that was some of the reasoning why we did that too. So I understand though where you're coming from.
Thank you very much for the answer.
Yeah.
Councilmember Larson?
I just wanted to add, Paul, it's a great question. Thank you for asking, and Kelly, it's a great answer also. Perhaps when we get to, I understand there is a third-party audit thing coming finally. We're looking at a firm. This is when I ask about those kinds of things. This is the kind of thing that I want to know about when we have somebody else evaluate it, because Paul's not wrong. It is, the requests are for modifications to zoning code in both instances. And you just said we enforce them differently based on where they're zoned, right?
Mm-hmm.
Consistency would be more helpful.
Okay.
Any other discussion or questions from council? If not, city clerk, please take the role on 25-26.
Floem.
Aye.
Bulo.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Carried six.
Moving on, we have two new ordinances. No anticipated action on these this evening. This will be first readings. Ordinance 2541, approve zone change from urban mixed-use district to urban mixed-use district with a planned development overlay at 536 Bayshore Drive. Plan Commission recommends approval. And ordinance 24, excuse me, 2542, approve amending section 17-33E and 17-44, and creating sections 17-44.1 and 17-44.2 for the City of Oshkosh Municipal Code pertaining to weed cutting and lawn care and native landscaping areas. Sustainability Advisory Board recommends approval of that as well. Those will come back at the next meeting for a second reading in action. Moving right into new resolutions. Resolution 25-43, approve final 2024 appropriation of ARPA funds. I'll take a motion and a second, please.
So moved second.
Discussion. I don't see any questions. City clerk, if you'll take the role on 2543?
Floem.
Aye.
Bulo.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Carried six.
Resolution 25-44, provide direction to staff on the design of intersection of Sawyer Street and Oshkosh Avenue. I'll take a motion and a second.
So moved second.
Discussion. Deputy Mayor?
I'm just going to say quick, I might be the only person in the world that really loves roundabouts, but I understand not having one right next to the bridge, so I understand why they went with the recommended, I believe it's 1F, and I support it. I'm glad that that intersection is finally getting a redesign.
Councilmember Larson?
I'll echo that, and since it says ask for direction, I concur. I think that's the best decision.
Any other comments, questions? I'll be supporting the recommendation as well from, from Transportation Committee and voting in favor of alternate 1F for the Third Street and Oshkosh Ave intersection. The only question I do have, and it may have been in the notes, but just for those listening at home, it's noted in several ways. This is one of the most frustrating or cumbersome intersections we have in the community, has been for a little bit. It's an awkward placement. Anticipated construction timeline, maybe. James, if, Mr. Robby, if you could share with the committee?
Yes, certainly, it has been probably one of the most contentious as far as design goes for the last many, many years. I think that's one that we hear a lot about. As of right now, we do have this programmed for construction in 2028.
Mr. Floem, go right ahead.
Not to jump on to the same thing that everybody else has said, but I hear complaints about this intersection fairly regularly, so I'm glad that we're getting on it. The design looks fantastic, and thank you for your collaboration with Transportation Committee and DOT.
If no other comments or questions, city clerk, if you'll take the role on 2544 for option 1F.
Floem.
Aye.
Bulo.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Carried six.
Final resolution of the evening, and then we'll move on to council discussion. Resolution 25-45, approve revenue facilities operating budget amendment from Menominee Park amusement train operation repairs in the total of $50,000. I have no one registered, but I'll take a motion and a second.
So moved second.
Council discussion. Mr. Stevenson, followed by Mr. Larson, then Mr. Floem.
So I'm excited to see this. I've been talking with staff and a handful of council about this moving forward. I really, I'm glad we're making an effort to save the train here, and I hope that we move to pass this. I think that the Menominee train is something that's uniquely Oshkosh. It's something that's, that's worth saving. It's something that I think the solutions we've been provided with using ARPA dollars or hyper-interest funds, I think is a really creative way to keep this thing moving. I kind of say that, though, with the caveat that we have to make sure that we have a long-term plan moving forward. I think that if we can get the train, I keep saying on track, and I don't mean it to be a pun, but it is kind of a pun, but if we get the train on track for this next season, and really kind of dial in what operations comes down to, and if we can get some sort of public-private partnership together, I think we're going to be in a really good position into the long term. So again, I'm very excited to see this resolution here. I hope others are excited about it as well.
Councilmember Larson, followed by Councilmember Floem.
Thanks, Joe, and I'm happy, happy to reiterate everything you said. I agree entirely. In addition to that, I think this is a great example of, a decision was made here or at budget, the general public said they didn't like that decision, and we listened, and now we're willing to change it. And I think that speaks volumes. I think everybody needs to know that that can happen, because we hear often that that doesn't happen. And this is that, and I hope to do more of that going forward. I also really like that, I got so many messages about this, it's been amazing, but it's great to hear the general public say that they don't mind and that they want their taxpayers, tax dollars used for quality of life items. I think that's wonderful. Director Maurer and I had a discussion about how enterprise funding methods aren't always the best thing for everything all the time, so this might be a good way to discuss that going forward. And what Joe ended with, it'll be great to look at what we can do further here going forward on public-private relationships and make it more than it is now. So I appreciate it.
Councilmember Floem, followed by Mr. Esslinger.
Yeah, obviously echoing those statements, but I think this is the first step in a larger solution for attractions at Menominee Park. I'd like to thank Mr. Maurer for meeting with me and a resident this past week concerning the train and other amusements within the park itself. This is a stopgap solution so that we can have more time to figure out what a long-term public-private partnership looks like. So again, this is your council listening to you. We made a decision. You guys didn't like it. We're going to go ahead and correct that and make sure that we can get on the right track here. No pun intended. But again, I'd like to thank the Parks Department. I'd like to thank finance for this as well, and hopefully we find a long-term solution for the train to keep it going for years and years to come.
Councilmember Esslinger?
Thank you, Mayor. I hate to see family traditions go away. This is certainly a family tradition. I know I took my kids there many, many years ago now, and I know many other people have also. And it's a good, clean, kind of fun thing to do for families. So I'm going to be in favor of this. I would caution, however, and I talked to a couple other people, you know, spending $50,000 or more on this just to do it for a year, probably not a wise thing to do. So if we're going to do this, and the other thing is, you know, this engine, I believe, is what, 70 years old or so? So you just don't go down to the parts store and buy these parts. And I don't want to get into a situation where we kind of put some bubble gum and some Band-Aids on this, and then it's broken down half of the summer anyway. That'll get people even more angry than they are now. So I'd like to do this and find a way, actually, to find new, new trains. I don't know what they are for cost, or gently-used ones, ones that isn't going to put an onus on our Parks Department to try to keep these running. So there's really two kind of schools of thought on issues like this, and I respect and I understand both of them, and I've talked to both sides of the fence on this. A lot of people will say that government is here to provide services to protect, and, you know, roads, fire, police, and that we shouldn't get into these types of things. We shouldn't spend money on it because it's not a necessity. And I, I respect that opinion. I think other people will say, well, but it is government, and it is here to provide. And sometimes providing things are not necessities, but they are, we have the quality of life term that comes up. And I guess I'm in that camp where, you know, government sometimes can spend some money. Again, we, hopefully, we can find a way for this to make money. If anyone has gone up to Green Bay, to Bay Beach, Ray, I correct, that, that is run by the city of Green Bay, is it not? And I think they run that at a huge profit, last time I heard. I think they run that at a profit. So, but, you know, this is, in the scheme of millions of dollars that we go through in the course of a year, $50,000 to provide for, for families to go and have some fun is certainly something we can do. And hopefully, I guess, as I said, we can find a way to get some new equipment there, and so we can make sure that when people do come in from out of town, that it is going to be running. So I wholeheartedly accept this, this concept. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Bilo?
Thank you. I really struggled with this one. I, like every council member, was sad when we heard that, hey, the train is down, and it's going to be a big lift to get it back up and going. And unlike some of, some of the council up here, I don't have nostalgia for the train. You know, I look at it as what it is, and I think it's a, a great attraction, and, but I was, I wasn't emotional about it. But I think that's the beauty of having a very diverse skill set up here is, and a very active community in letting us know what they want. I do believe that quality of life, culture, arts, memories matter greatly. So this is not where I would spend $50,000, but it's what I heard where the community wants to spend $50,000. I will ask you, Ray, if you can pop up, because I do have a question, or more of a clarification, because it's in the packet. This doesn't give us the money to fund, to run it, correct?
Correct. This is the dollar amount we've been talking about, so we can start getting parts ordered for the train track, the railroad ties and all those pieces, as well as eventually taking a look at the, the storage facility and getting something more secure erected there.
Sure.
So we will have to come back, as I stated in my memo, for a budget amendment for the entire revenue facilities budget, because right now we don't have salaries and all the other things that are entailed in that budget, but we'll be coming back with that in upcoming meeting.
Sure. And this is not a fair question, because I didn't give you ahead of time, but do you know off the top of your head what kind of dollar sign we should be looking for, and what kind of net operating loss we typically see in a year with, for the train?
It really depends. As I put in my memo, we used to run seven days a week, and when the operations, you know, slowed down in some of the rides, we had to get rid of because of the same issue. The carousel needed about $130,000 or $150,000 in repairs a couple of years ago, and we had to make that decision. So we did cut back on the hours. I think we went down to four days a week, reduced the hours, and now we're down to three hours, the Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So it really depends on a lot of that. I can tell you, just looking back at that budget, annual expenses typically are about anywhere from $40,000 to $50,000 roughly, and that's going over a number of years, sometimes a little higher, depending on replacement parts or any things we need to do on that.
Sure. And I appreciate that. And I will be supporting this, and like I said, it's not where I would spend my money, but that's not my job up here, is to, to, you know, pick my preferred places every time. It's to pick what I hear from our neighbors. And so I also will just finally share that I expect this to be a record-breaking attendance for the train based on the amount of feedback that we got and how many people loved it. And to Mr. Esslinger's point, this could be the last year, you know? We're going to have to evaluate this year by year, and if it breaks down again, we're going to have this conversation again. So that, with that, I'll yield.
I think we need some shirts. I'd wear a train shirt.
Use it as a fundraiser, right? Well, I'll go real quick. I'll keep it brief. I understand the sentimental attachment to, to these things, especially to Menominee Park. It's our flagship park. It's a beautiful space. And to be able to do this, this activity, and as Parks Director Maurer acknowledged, you know, we had the carousel issues a number of years back as well, and that was, that was a tough thing for the community to swallow, and that was, wasn't an easy decision for, for park staff or City Hall to recommend at that time that we discontinued that activity. And I, I wasn't up here, I don't believe, but it was, it wouldn't have been an easy decision as well for, for that council to, to make. So I understand, and I can appreciate the sentimental attachment to it. It's a bit of an emotional response for me. That's, that's what I saw and received from the community, whether it was social media, whether it was emails or phone calls, or just interactions on it. And it's trying to hold on to something of the past, and I can appreciate that a lot. However, this is a partial solution, and I'm not into, to half measures. If I had something in front of me that said, here's how we're not only going to repair it, but how, here's how we're also going to fund it, that's a different story for me. This is only to pay for repairs, and that doesn't solve the problems that we had. It wasn't just this thing was broken, and we can't find parts, and it's 70 years old. We also can't find part-time staff. And now, that's not just at the amusement center within Menominee Park. That is throughout city operations, and that's throughout this community, and honestly, throughout the country, part-time staff in some of these jobs are very hard to find, people willing to do some of these, these jobs. We've had to make a number of adjustments, I know, in the Parks area for landscaping staff over the summer, in my almost seven years on this council, where we used to have a number of part-time folks that would help us, and, and that staff is dwindling more and more as the years go on. So it is tough to hire. So even if we found the solution on the money side of repairs and the money side of operations, it doesn't mean we can even hire to put people in that, in that space for, for folks to use it. So this is a partial solution that I, that I won't support if everything was, if I had a full picture in front of me, I'd, I'd give it a different, a different look. I think it's time for us to move on from, from this activity. I know that's hard for the community possibly to hear, and, and I'm okay that they maybe disagree with me on that. But I think it's time for us to invest these funds in other things. This council made numerous decisions in this last budget cycle that will have a lasting impact into '25, '26, and beyond. And this, at some point, there is a, the scales tip, and you have to be really cognizant of every financial decision you make, and this is just not one I can support at this time. So I won't be in favor, but I also won't be sad if, if the train is running and several council members are able to, to help get this thing moving forward and keep it on track, I suppose. Council, Parks Director Maurer?
Thank you. I guess I would just like to make a couple of comments that I've said all along, this was not an easy decision for our department. We tried different operating tactics to try to make it a little more successful over the last couple of years. COVID didn't help. The whole Pratt Trail reconstruction issue didn't help, of course. When it went to our advisory Parks Board, who are citizens of the Oshkosh community, it was a tough discussion they had to have. And ultimately, consensus was, we don't like this, but we understand it. Council Budget Workshop at the end of October, when we talked about it, very difficult to look around the table, because we saw the same head shakes and the difficult decision, and it was made. So I think we're going to do our best to get it up and running. I appreciate you making a plug for seasonal staff. We will be posting our seasonal positions next week through HR. That'll be on the city website. So if we can get the plug in there to get people applying for all of our seasonal positions, that would be great.
Councilmember Stevenson has one more thing, I think.
I just have one parting comment. I, I don't disagree with you, Mayor, in much regard, and I, I think for me, this is just extending the train's life to look into it a little bit more. This is coming up with a plan and a way to come up with long-term funding. I think we've looked into it a little bit, but I don't think we've explored all the avenues of maintaining a long-term plan for the train. And I, I know, I mentioned this to Ray when we were talking. I mean, do we really even need that much staff? Do we just have one person ride it, and it's free? Or, I mean, I think there's other ways we can get around this staffing issue. Not that, I know the exact answers, but I think we should look into some of those things first. Clearly, the community has like a huge, has had an outcry for this, so I'm hoping that comes along with some public dollars that's going to be, or some private dollars. That's a little pitch. That's a little pitch to the community. Uh, I would love if, uh, if we can all come together and not just the city foot the bill on this thing, not just the city operate this thing, but if it's a, a community-wide effort.
Councilmember Esslinger?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I think you did a very, very good job of explaining, uh, why you're not in favor of this. I have the utmost respect, um, for that decision and, and your criteria. Um, I guess I just would say to the public, and some of the people that I spoke to that did not want to see this happen, um, we all have our own, uh, toy box that we like, and we like to spend money in. And so the folks that did not want to spend money on the train, I will politely remind you that of the millions of dollars we have into the Grand Opera House, um, the millions of dollars it took to get Pollock pulled back to where it is, and I think we've had some issues with funding over there, if I remember right. The amphitheater that we have, buying that property from WPS, and getting that into a condition where we can have, you know, the concerts there now. So, um, we spend millions and millions and millions of dollars in, um, quality of life, and for me, again, for fifty, for $50,000, uh, to keep that running. And, and maybe because there's an uproar, there, I know there's a young lady that did a GoFundMe page, God bless her, uh, maybe this is the impetus to get it running again, and we can get it going green, um, in the future. So, um, we've spent money before on stuff like this, and I, I think it's fine. Thank you.
If there's no other comments or questions, State Clerk, if you take the role on 25-45.
Flohm?
Aye.
Bilo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Mugabauer?
No.
Kirid, 5-1?
Moving on. We have council discussion, direction of city manager, as well as future agenda items. Uh, first up, uh, under council discussion direction, there was, uh, I think this is a follow-up or a continuation from last meeting regarding a special meeting with Oshkosh taxpayers, council, city staff regarding recent property tax bills. Uh, the topic was Mr. Esslinger's, if you want.
Yep.
It's still on the, the docket for you. Go right ahead.
Uh, yeah, quickly, um, I, I don't know really what to say. I was gonna call you, Mayor, and have a conversation with you, but I chose not to do that. I didn't want anyone to have the perception that I'm trying to sway you in one way or the other. I'm just hoping that, I don't know if you saw the tape, uh, from the last meeting, so I think you're a pretty smart guy. I think you can kind of figure out where I'm going with this. So, uh, there was, I think, if I did the head count, there was three that said, yep, let's go for it, and three that were, I don't know if they said no, but just were maybe a little foggy on the idea or weren't great. So you get the, the say tonight whether we have this meeting or not. Or, I think, let me, let me be clear. I think I had talks with Councilmember Larson. Whether we do this in this fashion, I think Chris and I are gonna have one regardless, but this would just be where we have city staff, the people that actually can answer these questions better than we can, um, at the meeting. That would take, you know, obviously, that, that should take an act of the council, but the meeting's gonna be held in one, one way, shape, or form then, and if, if we didn't do it here, then we'll have to come up with the time and place for that. Uh, but I think having the staff here, our, our professionals, um, I think is, is the best option.
Uh, Councilmember Larson and Councilmember Flohm want to speak too. Go right ahead.
Sure. I'll reiterate some of what I said last time. Mr. Mayor, this is, I mean, it does, that doesn't fall to you, but we were waiting for you last time to make a decision, so it'll be good to hear what you say. I just wanted to follow up on what Paul said to a degree. I had a conversation Sunday morning with a gentleman who I know who's well-informed, who asked me about his tax bill, and said he didn't understand it, and I explained it, because we can all explain it. We've all been asked this question hundreds of times. And after I did that, he said, that's great. How come nobody said that to me before? And that's kind of what I'm getting with the point here. That's what Paul and I think is a good idea. It doesn't mean anybody's gonna promise anything that they can or can't do, but we can all explain it. City staff can explain it. Everybody can explain what happened to folks, but there really hasn't been a press release or a statement made by the city about the revaluation, what happened thereafter. Little bits of it here and there. Don't get the wrong idea, but I really think there's value in it. And to Paul's point, if we don't want to have a formal meeting, we can have office hours at somewhere, just the two of us, and then people can come ask us. I think it's better, and to the point of the conversation I had Sunday morning, that gentleman is far more apt to believe you guys when you say that than he is me, because that's the point. But staff hasn't really come out and said all of that yet. So I think it'd be great if we could all do it, but if not, we'll just keep working on it, because I think it's important.
Councilmember Flohm?
Thank you. Um, just kind of reiterating some of those comments. Um, personally, if, if this is something that can't go forward, I would like to be at a form of office hours myself as well. Um, I think ultimately, the buck stops with us, and even though this was not something that we had a ton of agency over, given DOR revaluation mandates, I feel like it's up to us to answer these questions, and it would be fantastic if city staff could be present as well. Um, I understand that there was a little bit of trepidation of, you know, having people who were disgruntled about their specific property tax bills, but frankly, this is why you do the job. Uh, people are not going to be happy all the time. This is something that people are obviously not happy about, having to pay, in some cases, thousands of more dollars in property tax bills, knowing that this, there's certain things the city can do, and certain things the city cannot do, and a lot of this will have to fall on the state. Uh, however, I think this is something that we owe the public. We will not be able to address specific property tax bills and court, and, you know, um, redresses or grievance for those. That has to go through the city assessor's office, but what we can do is we can help explain, we can help walk through, walk people through what happened, and what we can do next time in our backyard, and what we can do to, to, uh, talk to our state officials as well. I will note that a couple of state officials have been invited, and I would say it is a good idea for the, the public to take that opportunity to talk to them as well, because ultimately, a part of this fix will have to rely on them drafting some form of legislation to remediate this. So I'm strongly in favor of this. I was at the last meeting. I think this is part of the job you do as a member of council. This is why you take up papers. This is why you run for office. Uh, so I am strongly in favor of this.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Uh, I, I'd still like to hear from a few other, uh, mayor and, and Carl, uh, what you guys have to think, but I am gonna push back on, I meet with people probably every, I, I, I'm off on Fridays, so I always meet with someone on Friday no matter what. I meet with multiple citizens throughout the week. Uh, if you guys email me and want to have coffee, that's what I do. Uh, so, uh, don't, uh, please don't say that we're not already explaining this and already talking about it, because I, I most certainly am. Uh, I think that's, uh, I just want to make sure the public knows that. I want to make sure that this council knows that, that I think all of us are doing that work. Uh, and whether or not we want to do a forum or not, I still, I, I have my hesitations, and I think I, I said last time, I, I was worried about overpromising. I don't mind the idea of having an open dialogue with folks, and if that's the, the method by which we're, uh, making sure people are, are kind of consuming information from the city, that, that's great. Uh, but I still, my, my main hesitation is that we're going to be kind of opening a can of worms of people to come and ask me to lower their taxes, but, uh, I also would like to push back the, the gentleman left before we could maybe talk to him, but, uh, I, I work in a lot of communities throughout the state, and I have no problem saying Oshkosh is one of the best communicators in, in the state. Uh, we have, uh, Oshkosh Media. We have a lot of, uh, of policy that we go through when it comes to rezoning. We send out letters. We put up signs. Uh, we have neighborhood meetings. Those are unique to Oshkosh, and I think a lot of people from Oshkosh don't realize that, uh, that other communities don't have the breadth of communication that I think we do here. Uh, so I, I, I just want to make sure we, people know that we are on the forefront of communication. We do put these things out. So, again, I, I would like to hear more discussion on where, uh, where we'd like to take this specific item, but those are a few points I wanted to touch.
Uh, Deputy Mayor?
Sure, thank you. Um, I have no problem with answering complaints from, from any of our neighbors or citizens at, at all. Um, and as to office hours, I, I agree with, uh, Councilmember Stevenson. Uh, they're all the time. Um, at Friday night, at 9:30 at night, I was writing a 12 paragraph email back to somebody who wrote me a 12 paragraph email about this, where I was able to pull up his 2023 assessment and his 2024 assessment and answer questions specific to his property that he had. Um, I have no problem with the meeting or the education. My pushback on it is that's not the right solution to get the information that most of the people are gonna want. The information is out there. Again, we have, eh, we've done multiple different avenues of ways that people can get the information, and if they have specific questions, they need to reach out to one of us specifically or to the assessor's, uh, office specifically, if it's gonna be about their property. Um, my pushback to it is that we're gonna have people that want an answer there that we can't give them, and the, the better venue for that is, like I said, I, I have office hours basically about 18 hours a day when I'm not sleeping, and I'll fire back a, a quick or a long email, depending on what I get. Um, and I know the rest of us do that too. So it's not that I don't think the meeting, um, that, that I'm afraid of having a meeting or afraid of getting yelled at. It's, I just don't think it's the right, uh, solution to the problem. Um, I, I, that's all I'll say.
Councilmember Flohm?
Yeah, I think, I'm not trying to allege that people here don't respond to emails or don't talk to, to residents. I mean, I know that's something that we all do all the time, every single day. Basically, it's, you're always on. The thing that I think is that I, I don't think this hurts to have. I know there are certain answers that we're not gonna be able to give, because again, this is mostly a state issue instead of a local issue, and we're not necessarily promising a ton. I know there's been some discussions about potentially a biennial budget, you're revaluing more frequently, but that's really all we can do. We're, we're not, I don't plan on going into this and say, I promise that I'm going to do everything I can to cut taxes by, by a certain amount, because budgetary, budgetary realities are, are somewhat different. What I'm trying to convey is that this is an open forum that is in a different environment, because not everybody's gonna want to come to a council meeting, come up to the dais and want to speak. Some people are a little bit more afraid to do that than others. Um, so I think this doesn't hurt. I'm not saying that, that members of council don't like to reply to people. It's not the point at all. I think it's just providing an extra venue for this is something that I think that is healthy for the community.
Looks like it's my turn. Um, quick hit, quick answer. I think we provide a lot of opportunities for citizens to engage with us, I think. Um, and over the last roughly, I don't know, eight months or so between the reevaluation period and process, the open book process, um, that's statutorily required, um, and then through our budget process, um, inside city hall, communications outside, um, the accessibility of this council. By the way, uh, in my seven years up, up here, this is the most, um, I'll say this is the most active and engaged council, I believe, in terms of community outreach that I've had the privilege of serving with. Um, all seven members up here, um, absolutely go above and beyond in terms of their duties to the, to the citizens and, um, responding and helping direct, uh, and redirect sometimes for, for questions and, and answers from city staff. So, um, I don't think it's the right venue, um, or the, the right atmosphere to, 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 um, to try to answer questions. I know, um, Councilmember Flohm's point, yes, you know, uh, it may not work for a 6:00 AM or 6:00 PM Tuesday meeting for folks to come here, but this is the avenue that people have to tell us that they don't like something we're doing, or something that is going on in this community, or something that they want to see changed. And, um, that is a strong avenue. If you want to, um, influence change, uh, one of the ways is you come and stand in front of us and consume our time. That is a really good way to influence change, positive or negative. It's a good way to influence it if you stand in front of us and tell us what you feel and how to improve it. Um, we give a, uh, not all government bodies, school districts, counties, give the time that we allow for citizens to speak to us. It's, it's a privilege that, that's extended, actually. Um, many government, um, entities, government bodies don't allow it, um, or, or very, very, um, restrict the ability for people to speak to us on a Tuesday night, um, for their, uh, you know, on camera, live, um, and obviously, uh, for tape, but that, the, their fellow citizens can hear their messages and, um, agree or disagree with them. So, um, we're active, um, to that point, to Councilmember Stevenson's, you know, um, comment. Um, this council responds, um, very well to, to people's requests, and I just don't think this, um, this meeting would be needed. Um, so I, I don't support it. Um, if, if you're doing a, a tally, I guess it's, uh, three, four, uh, four against, and, uh, that would be the, the end of the discussion for me.
Councilmember Esslinger, floor is yours.
Thank you. Okay, well, that said, um, I guess, Mr. Larson, uh, just for the edification for the public, then, uh, you and I will get together, and, um, I would say by the next council meeting, we should have kind of the rules, regulations, and we'll get together with the legal staff on where we can go and, you know, all the public notifications. Um, have a set of criteria we're going to discuss, and, um, we'll just go from there. So I, if we can notice right now for the next council meeting, uh, that we will be, uh, explaining where we're gonna have a meeting regarding the 2004 taxes.
Well, I think you're not gonna like my response to this, but, um, city staff doesn't send out press releases or, or notice for, for, for private meetings.
Yep.
This body has spoken and says we do not want to have a public meeting.
Well, that's nice, but I'm an elected official, and if I'm gonna have a meeting to talk to people that represent me and vote for me, I'm gonna let them know.
And you shouldn't.
And I can, I can do it on this dais.
You, and you definitely can, but
That's what I'm talking about.
City Hall cannot and will not send out a press release for you or?
I'm not talking about sending out a press, I'm talking about us sending out a press, Chris and I sending out a press release.
You, yes, you've got access to social media. Uh, feel free to use that to your disposal.
And we will.
And I encourage, um, I encourage council members to have meetings with, and, and to do it within the, the bounds of the open meetings laws that are, that dictate how we meet, uh, by the state of Wisconsin, and as long as they legally held, uh, meeting, absolutely. Um, it's just this body has spoken that we're not gonna have a, a council-initiated public forum, um, you know, council-supported forum.
Paul, I understand. I understand. What I'm, what I'm doing here is, first of all, I'm embarrassed, and I'm sad for the, for the residents of this city, to have them watch seven council members discuss whether we could have a meet, whether we should have a meeting explaining why we're raising their taxes and all the elements that went into it. That is embarrassing. I'm embarrassed, but I'm voting to do it. My point in saying to the staff to put it on the agenda is to explain what the rules are and just where it's going to be. It's not a press release. It's just where we're gonna go and what time. Uh, do I need permission from the council to do that? This is ridiculous.
You also don't need guidance from city staff.
Uh, you got, you, you know, some of you people should be ashamed of yourselves. You really should.
That's a high soapbox over there on the end of the council.
Yeah, it is. You should climb on it once.
Moving on, we'll, uh, move on to procedure for council members to place items on the council agenda. Also, uh, Councilmember Esslinger on this one.
Um, yeah, so again, I mean, this is just a holdover from last meeting, and we talked about this months ago. Uh, don't know why this is so difficult to come up with a decision, how a council member gets something on the agenda, but evidently it is. Um, so I would like to come to a resolution on whatever it is. Whatever it is, it is. You can agree with it or disagree with it, but can we come to a resolution on how a council member puts something on the agenda? I say, as I have in the past, that if someone, if a council member wants something on the agenda, they contact the staff and have it on, put on the agenda. If there's some other map that reforms, I would love to hear it.
Um, and I know I, uh, I jumped on that grenade back in September-ish, um, and that's on me for taking a little longer than I had planned on as well. Attached to the handout, I was not able to meet the, uh, council-required deadline, uh, early last week to get this on the agenda, but, um, so no action tonight, because it's, it wasn't publicly noticed as to what the, the, the suggestion might be or, or a recommendation, but put together a flow chart. Uh, turns out some people like pictures, so there's a flow chart. There's also some description to it, too, um, in terms of how to physically get an item on an agenda. That's a suggestion, uh, kind of a accumulation of, um, um, several other communities, um, process, not perfect, uh, open to, you know, edits and things like that. Take your time. Maybe, uh, um, it'll be on next council's agenda for a, a further discussion, but it's a starting place. It's a, it's a, it's a place to at least say, yes, this is good, no, this is bad, and, uh, to try to answer that question. I know that, that's, uh, especially new council members, um, I don't want to, it, it sounds awkward, but the new council members have struggled in the past on figuring out how to navigate that, and, um, this may, um, this may help clean that up. There was one other, two, or two other little, uh, just rule updates that kind of tag teamed along with this, so I felt the, it appropriate to, to share my thoughts on that, since I was the one putting it together. Um, yeah, feel free to, um, have some brief commentary on, on this if you'd like. It was on the agenda, but this was not, uh, published for the public, so, um, I'm just handing it out to you now, and city staff has, has gotten their copies for the record as well. Uh, Councilmember Larson?
I, I think I have more on this, but to start with that last point, Attorney Lawrence and pointed out to us during the discussion of this item at the last meeting, that we can take action at this point of any meeting if it's in discussion. So I don't, to the point of whether this needs to come back next time for action or not, and I, I still have questions about that, because we talked about, can we make a motion on things that weren't noticed? And the answer was yes. I'm still not sure that that's really something we can do, but I'd love to try it out.
No. I think you're misinterpreting.
This is why I'm asking.
If it, it has to be noticed to talk about it.
Got it.
But you can make a motion on it if it's not a formal resolution or a
Yep.
or an ordinance. They're still noticed and properly on an agenda for discussion and direction. It does, it They're still noticed and properly on an agenda for discussion and direction. It just doesn't have to be in a formal resolution format. That's what I talked about last time.
Perfect.
Yep.
So it does still need to be something that's on the agenda.
That's on the agenda.
Correct. Last, that was not clear last time. And I went back and watched it to make sure that I hadn't lost my mind. It sounded like we could do, we could motion anything we wanted to.
If that's, that was not my intent.
That's okay. And it was, yeah, the living in the gray area comments from Councilor Nichols and the attorney was that was where that, that was a positive. And I thought that was something that was going to be great that we could, that we could take action on this now. And if we want to do it next time, that's fine, too. I have lots more to say on the subject. But if we're going to pass it on, I mean, this is the fourth time Paul's brought it up. If we're going to bring it up again next time, that's great. I'm the one who's struggled the most with this, I think, because I went back and looked at my notes. I've made four requests for things to be in discussion since I was elected. One of them has been added so far. That's, my success rate is 25% was just asking for something to be brought up for you guys for discussion, because I want to talk about it with you, not with staff. So I will have, if we're going to do this next time, I can give you a heads up, and we'll talk about it next time. But I think we need to do better at being able to have the discussion like people here in the first place, and then let staff feedback follow, because that's how this works. But that's for, if, again, if that's for next time, I'm fine with that being for next time. And I'm glad that now I know we can't motion anything we want to all the time.
And just maybe a little point of clarification for myself, the way I phrased something in there, only because I didn't provide or wasn't, I didn't have the chance, shouldn't say it that way. I did have the chance. I missed the deadline. That's on me, to include this in the published copy was my only thought, that whether it's Councilmember Nichols or even staff or the public would have an opportunity if they wanted to weigh in on that before specific direction was given. But you're absolutely right. During the council discussion part of a meeting, we do have the ability to, you know, hey, I move that we, you know, that we direct staff to do X, and we take a role on that, and that isn't, that's something that's within it, as long as it's been, you know, it is on the agenda as a discussion topic.
And I get that, and I'd rather not do that because I think we can all do better than that.
Yes.
But I do think we do need a process where we can more easily get to the point of having a discussion first. But again, Matt, how much do you want to go into this tonight, or do you want to just move it to next? I mean, let me, let me give you an example quickly, because it's always brief with me, right? So one of the items, you guys all know one of the items I requested in middle of December. It's for a discussion about a biennial budget. I requested that we discuss it. The reason there's always so much consternation with this subject is for future councils and so that no one can dictate city staff time, right? So that we can't monopolize the process, that nobody can get out in front of anything and waste time that we shouldn't allocate, right? I made that request, and staff evaluated it. Staff is already on some of these steps, and we haven't even talked about it yet. That's what I want to avoid. I want to have a conversation with the elected officials and then direct staff there afterwards as to what happens. Currently, we don't do that, because if I make a request, and your flow chart illustrates that, if the city manager doesn't like my request, then it doesn't happen. And I think we need to put the cart in the right order with the horse, right? Because I have now directed city staff time without intending to because they've evaluated my request before you even heard it. And I think that's problematic. So again, that can be for the next time we talk about it. I will have the same questions about the flow chart as I do now, but either way would be great. I just think we need to refine that portion of it. I don't need hard and fast rules on how it all works, but at current it's difficult.
Message received. Okay. Councilmember Flohm, and then followed by Councilmember Stevenson.
Yeah, I think for me, this is twofold. First is that there are several discussion items that several members on this council have wanted to talk about. And I think this is a perfect case in point for this. The fact that it's taken so long for us to actually have a discussion about this really kind of shows the flaws of the process, in my opinion. Completely understand where you came from on this. Not blaming you, that happens. However, at the same time, you know, to Councilmember Larson's point, the fact is, is that if we start to ask city staff for certain things, we're directing their time before we can have discussions amongst ourselves. And I think that is probably the most important thing we can do before we direct city staff to do anything, and also for the public benefit as well, that we should be having these discussions here before city staff get to work on something, and then something is put in front of us to vote when the public can't access the conversations that we've had about this with staff about creating a policy or a guideline or something. The second point I have is about for future councils. To be honest with you, I was given, I think, three or four explanations of how to get something on an agenda item, and I still don't quite understand it. So I understand that, you know, things do live in the gray, specifically with anything legal or governmental. However, just having some sort of guideline about this, and I think this is a, this is a good start. I think this is a good way to show how things work. I would, you know, I also am in the camp of having the process a little bit refined, but I do think this is a step in the right direction. However, this is something that we need to, we need to make sure that we address and don't keep, you know, for technical reasons or whatnot, making sure that this conversation gets drawn out longer and longer. We need to address this, and we need to get going on it pretty soon.
Councilmember Stevenson, followed by Deputy Mayor.
I'm going to take some time to digest this before I make any recommendations on it. But I think could, maybe this is partly already given, but staff, if you've gotten a copy of this, and could you guys maybe review it and see if it, it's your both best practice and if it matches kind of what you believe the process to be for next time?
Yeah. Otherwise, I do think we need a policy. I do think this body needs to vote on it. I know other people have said they like to live in the gray. I like black and white stuff, but sometimes there's gray, I suppose. But thank you for putting this together. I think this does provide us like a starting point, and we can go from here. Other thought, I know this has taken maybe a little bit of time to move forward, but I don't mind the timing with Rebecca coming on in February. I do, I don't know what this council's thought on, do we want her input, or do we want it in place before she's here?
Well, we'll go Deputy Mayor below, and maybe he'll start answering some of those questions for you.
I think this would be something nice for her to come into having it resolved. But my point of why I buzzed in is, looking at both sides of this, there's an inconsistency because on the typed-out side, it says that an item can be removed by city manager, mayor, or, I'm sorry, city manager or mayor, is that correct?
Yep.
Yeah. And then on the flow chart side, that it just, it's inconsistent with that. I just, when we do get it, I don't care which way it is. I just want a clean copy so we can have a meaningful debate on that.
Nope. Fair, fair point on that one. Councilmember Rasslinger, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to refresh the memories of the council members. When we did interview all of the candidates, I had one standard question. The question was, how do you feel about a council member putting an item on the agenda? I asked that specific question. And in Ms. Grill's case, the one that matters because we're hiring her, she said, and I'll paraphrase what she said, essentially, you are the elected officials, you make that decision, I run the staff, I bring forward things that the staff needs to bring forward to vote on. If you hear things from the public that you want to put on the agenda, that's your deal. Am I wrong, Mr. Larson?
Correct.
Okay.
I had something. I lost my train of thought. I think it's right that we formalize something, just because it's evident that not only are council members that are currently serving, but council members in the past have struggled with this topic. So it would be good to clear, clear up any part of the confusion, whether it's completely cleared up or, or, you know, even partially addressed. That would be a good thing. And maybe it's even simpler. To Councilmember Larson's comments, you know, the council discussion part of the agenda is there for a reason. You know, if council members want to have a discussion on topics, you know, do we have free rein to just add those items? The balance to this is, it's the giving direction to city staff or that city staff has to do work in advance of that. And if I put topic X on there, and they have no idea where I'm going to go with it, this council tends, and all councils do, tends to look at staff for answers when there's, when there's questions. And staff will be in a position of, they have no answers because they would, they wouldn't have had any information to provide. So there's that balancing act of, you know, us having a discussion before staff is ready to give us a recommendation on something, yet do we even want them taking any staff time before they make a recommendation? It's chicken and the egg type of scenario, I suppose. So just some brief, a brief thought on that, because I thought your points were well.
We agree. I mean, I'm right there with you.
Well spoken and well, well put.
And not to jump in front of you, Joe, but Matt, to that point, that's exactly what I'm saying. I mean, we were the ones elected to do this. If somebody runs amok of it, I'm presuming this council or the next one, we will control that part of it. I've been less and less explaining with my requests as they went on, to exactly your point. Because it's not that I don't want to hear city staff's opinions on it. We, those are our experts. The department heads exist for a reason. They know more than us on most subjects. But I want to discuss it here based on what the general public tells us they want to discuss. And then I want staff to help us make the right decisions going forward. That's how I think this form of government works. So to your point, I think any councilor should be able to add anything to the discussion portion anytime. You know, I don't like the three and four nodding heads thing, as we've had that discussion before. So I think we maybe need to codify what happens after that discussion portion, as far as where action's involved. But I think that's when staff time gets involved, and that's where direction comes from. But the discussion is a starting point. And to Paul's point, we should all just be able to do that. That's what I thought was the case. And I can promise you, that's what everybody at home thinks is the case. That's just not the case currently.
Deputy Mayor, followed by Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you. And I, I absolutely agree with Councilmember Larson. I think that the council discussion part of it is the proper area to put that on the notice. And if there is information that the councilors can provide ahead of time to steer direction for the council, but I just want to make it 900% crystal clear that no staff time is expected, no research, no background, no information, that this is literally the starting point for a legal conversation that we can have, whereas we can't have that conversation legally outside of that. So in terms of that, and I also like your point that if it is something that we find is non-productive for this body, then that is something we can address. I don't foresee that. I would hope that councilors are not going to put personal grievances or projects or something like that, that they don't believe is going to move forward, or at least have some information to back up and try to get it moving forward. So that's my two cents on that.
Councilmember Flohm, followed by Councilmember Flohm, excuse me, Councilmember Stevenson, followed by Councilmember Flohm. There's not two Flohms up here.
So I think there's maybe two things going on here. The discussion items and agenda items, I think, are two different things. And I guess, yeah, if we want to, I think I'm fully in support if anybody wants to put anything on discussion item, we can talk about whatever we want. But I guess, in my mind, I would like to know, let's say Joe Stevenson has a resolution. I want a resolution done. And I get Councilor Larson's, go ahead, he says, yep, I like that resolution, too. Can I go to them and say, this is the resolution, please put it on the agenda? I would think probably not right now, right? Do we need to go, I would like to have that codified. Is it, is it, a council person can get an actual resolution, an actual action item put on the agenda with some process? Or does it have to go to discussion first and then go to action item? And I'm indifferent on what that is. But I think, I think if we can lay that out, it would be, it would be beneficial. In my experience, the discussion portion of the council item is maybe a little bit hit and miss in other communities. They don't always have that item. So there is very clear rules on how exactly an item gets onto the agenda, but it's a formal item. I think in our instance, the discussion is kind of, I'll call it a soft item.
Okay. Councilmember Flohm.
Yeah, I think for this, kind of thinking in the same manner of a two-track solution here. The first is, if you want to go ahead and put something on the agenda in terms of a discussion item to help start the conversation about potential policy changes, I think any member of council here should be allowed to do that. For me, the thing is, is that if you're going to be researching something, if you want to bring an item to the table and discussion, it's incumbent upon you as a member of council to do your research and to have that done. I think using city staff time for things that are going to be discussed publicly, especially when there hasn't been a policy developed, is probably not necessarily fair to them. It is incumbent upon us, if we want to say, all right, any other member of council can put something on the agenda in the discussion portion, then it should be incumbent upon you to do your research. From there, though, I do think that there does need to be some further refinement. Again, if, say, Councilman Stevenson and I have a resolution that we want to put on the agenda, can we do that in terms of this is an actual policy that we've developed, that we may or may not have gotten input from city staff on, that we want to put on the agenda to vote on at the next meeting? I think that's something else that needs to be codified, too. In its current form, I agree with you. I don't think that's currently possible, but we should explore whether or not that should be.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I just want to clarify something with Attorney Lawrence that I believe to be true, but I just want to get her take on it. Because what we've talked about a lot is like, if I go to Councilmember Larson and we agree, we want to get something on the agenda and action item. But what happens in the case where I go to Councilmember Larson, he disagrees with me. So then I go to Councilmember Stevenson, he disagrees. And now I'm in a walking forum situation.
You are walking a forum.
That is what I, I just want to have something in there to protect against, because otherwise you can forum shop your idea, and you're breaking open meetings law then. So that's what I thought. Just wanted to double check and have it on the record that we had that discussion.
Councilmember Rasslinger.
Okay. Thank you. I always kind of thought the way this process worked was, the first Tuesday in every April, the voters went out to the polls and voted for the individuals that they thought were going to represent them the best. So that's the first cog in this process. For whatever reason, they decide to vote for someone, they have now given that individual power. Okay? Everyone with me so far? Okay. We all have power. If we're up here voting on issues, then we should have the power to bring up issues. I don't know. I think that's pretty simple. And, you know, flow charts like this, and that's fine. But these are our rules. With all due respect to the staff, it's not their rules. This is our rules, and we can change this at any time we want to. And if we're going to get elected, if we're going to, and I'm not on a power trip here, believe me, I'm not, but if we go through the trouble of getting elected because we think we can represent people and we want to listen to them, then damn it, let's listen to them. Let's get up here and do what they want us to do. And if I want to come to the staff and say, I want something on the agenda, and I'm a clown and no one likes it, that will come through, and then the next time I come up to get voted on in April, I'm going to be gone. You won't have to worry about me anymore. That's how this process works. I don't want to waste any staff member's time, but that's what the staff is here for. It's for us to get points across. It's for them to explain how the taxes go up or down or whatever they do. That's what they're here for, and they're paid very handsomely for that. So I'm almost to the point where I'm begging, if we can come up with some kind of policy on this, whether it's, you get to ask one other, well, that doesn't even make any sense. It's just, one council member should contact the staff. If we're, if we're taking too much staff time, then maybe other council members can state, you know what, you're wasting time with these staff members. It gets out in the public. It'll take care of itself. It will take care of itself. Thank you.
Councilmember Larson.
Last one, just because I see you taking notes over there, and I hear a lot of us saying a similar thing, which is great. I should have been more clear with my requests I'm making are for discussion items. And what I want to see codified thereafter is what action occurs and how quickly. And if that means it takes two of us or three of us. But I do think it's important to say what that is, because we also get in the habit of doing nothing. And then eight and 10 and 12 and 14 months go by and nothing happens. So I do think that would help a ton. But talking about it now is great, and then, I think, to me, that's the part of the process that I think we need to refine. But also, just being able to add something for discussion, because we can't do that now. Can I add to the agenda for next time, a discussion item about this, and then we can take action on it? Just saying. We're going to anyway, but you get my point. I mean, not to be smug, but.
Point taken.
Yep.
Councilmember, excuse me, Deputy Mayor, and then I'll try to.
Yep.
Answer one or two things in there. Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, this is real quick. Just to circle back to a point that you made, that we didn't really flush out yet, the, the nodding heads is not a great way, I think, to move an item from council discussion to an action item. I think that should be, after everybody's got a chance to talk about it, done with a formal vote. I think that would be a better way to make sure that when it is moving forward to, to staff time, that it at least has the support to be reasonable.
That's good clarification, a cleanup. So what I think I've heard, if somebody tell me I'm wrong, it seems to be, I'll say, general, but I think it's unanimous consensus that council members should be able to put things on under the council discussion part of a agenda. Is that correct? Am I incorrect on that?
Noting heads.
Yes.
Mine's nodding heads.
Yes. And to your point.
To the record, Paul didn't move his head at all.
I didn't. I all disagrees.
So that's, and yes, that part, for some reason, that part, over time, has been So that's, and yes, that part, for some reason, that part over time has been grayish. I don't know why. Councilmember, Congressman Esslinger got two items on the agenda tonight. He got two items on last week, last meeting's agenda, and the meeting before that, too, I think.
Same, too, also.
But, but that, it does work. Apparently, it just doesn't work for all, is a fair, a fair thing to say, I think, is what I'm picking up. So, you know, to Councilmember Esslinger's point, these are council rules. They're not staff rules for council. They help make sure we stay within the legal guidelines and don't do something that's going to come back to bite us, but they are our rules. They govern how we operate as a body, to hopefully act professionally and do the responsible thing for the citizens. If council's, and I'll poll council if you want me to, but I saw nodding heads. I know you don't like that. You know, going forward, from this point forward, council has the authority or the purview to insert items under council discussion. What you talked about, though, is how does it advance from there? And I think that's where then this, or something like this, completely, if I have to blow it up and do something different, fine. That's where then this kicks in as an option. It's the resolutions and the ordinance that absorb, you know, staff time, that we want to prevent the waste of their time. We really do. I appreciate that councilmembers have said, you know, if a councilmember gets out of line and does too much, that council will basically self-police. I can tell you, in seven years, it has been a very real struggle for council to self-police themselves. It really has. So while the, it's nice to say, it doesn't regularly happen, that council actually tells itself to knock it off, that you are doing something out of bounds and that you are consuming too much time on something, and you shouldn't be. That has been a real struggle for councils to handle themselves, whether it's lack of interest in conflict or not. I don't know what the real reason has been, but, so helping clear it up would help prevent that.
Yep.
I took some good notes, I think, in terms of some thoughts from different councilmembers. We'll have it on the agenda for the next council meeting for process for action items discussion. But I think from this point forward, council has, let's just clear it up right here and now, council has the ability to add a discussion item for an agenda. Has to be on the agenda within the notice period. It's, was it 4:00 PM or noon the previous Tuesday? I think I even have it, 4:00 PM the Tuesday before, has to be on the agenda. That's no different than any other item that needs to be on the agenda from staff or the member of the public or a planning commissioner or something else, so.
And maybe it would, just a little bit of a caveat, with the, if staff has time to give like, a review and a look at the discussion item, by all means, go for it. But I think I'd want to make clear that we're trying to not give staff direction from an individual, that that discussion item doesn't necessarily have staff's, like, first look at it yet.
Correct. That they're not expected to do anything with it.
Right.
Until, we've had a discussion and provided a consensus direction. Still, at that point, two people are, you know, for something and five are against, you know, it doesn't move forward.
We're all very good at, with deference to staff, when items are on the agenda and we have questions, we're all very good at saying, hey, here's a question that I will ask you in the meeting, so they can be prepared. That is that part. And if they want to do that with the discussion part, that's fine. But that doesn't mean anybody's required to. And we're asking out of deference to their time, when it's already on here, giving our questions on something in advance is a courtesy, and that's great. So I think that continues, but I don't think it has any bearing to this part of it.
I would agree. I don't think it necessarily does. I think the implication here is that council is essentially, these are council rules, council is deciding to govern itself as it has every right to, that's what we're elected to do. And if we put an item on for discussion, it should not be expected of staff to start researching it. It could be for a general policy. The way I see this is that when we're trying to develop a policy, it's either a question, we've gotten a lot of public input about something, and we need to discuss this, council agrees to develop a policy, and then it's either referred to a committee or staff looks at it to draft something. And staff may work with a committee in order to develop a policy and bring it back to us to consider and vote on. Where I still get hung up a little bit is that I do think it should be within council's purview, that if one or two or how many members of council want to put an action item to vote on the agenda, I think it's within the purview of council to do that.
And I know that we're not going to solve that here tonight. Next meeting.
Yeah. Again. Interim City Manager, Assistant City Manager.
Been called worse.
Director of HR, comma, comma, comma in there.
Well, I think I might be able to help a little bit with this.
You've heard a lot.
Yeah. And I know council's very busy, but they may not have had the opportunity to read the article that was placed in the newsletter about this very subject. So in that article, it indicates what the current process is. And in that process, it illustrates that councilmembers can bring items to this area of discussion and direction to the city manager as they wish. So that's the current process right now, that's the process that I've witnessed for, I don't know, 25 years. So it's pretty consistent. There's not a lot of confusion. I don't know why people are really that confused by it. But I suspect maybe it's because there's been a lot of questions that have been posed to staff. Questions that may have come from citizens, questions that councilmembers may have thought of on their own. And then when those questions come up, I think some of those for, and I don't mean to besmirch anyone here, you know, councilmembers or staff, some of those have piled up, I would just say. So there's a backlog of those questions, and I think, I think there's not a clear understanding if that question is something that is something that is going to be placed on the agenda under discussion and direction to the city manager, or if it's just a question. Because those questions consume a significant amount of staff time to research. And I think because there was an overabundance of those questions that were provided to the previous city manager and directed towards staff, the burden in responding to all those just became onerous. We'll just say it that way. So I think that that created some confusion as to what could be placed under discussion and direction to the city manager or not. But in my mind, it's very clear. It's been clear for 25 years what the process is, and it's in the newsletter if you want to refer to it. So in regard to the city manager's role and how the city manager interacts, I mean, I haven't had an opportunity to look at the draft that the mayor provided, but I think it's appropriate to have the city manager involved in that process, because the city manager knows what the staff's workload is. The city manager may have had dialogue because of a previous question with a councilmember about this. And for example, I've had some communication with some of the councilmembers about topics that would be beneficial for the staff person to be available for, should the councilmembers have questions. Now, I understand, you know, some councilmembers have said, hey, we just want to have a discussion, it's just all of us up here. But I've also witnessed over 25 years that there gets to be a point where the councilmembers say, hey, staff, what do you think about that? Which is very much appreciated. And if that councilmember maybe isn't available because of a previous commitment, then it makes it difficult for staff to be able to respond, to do their job, to provide the proper information for council, to try to decide whether or not they want to give direction to the city manager. So in my mind, that would be an example of where the city manager would say, hey, we're happy to put this on the agenda, but because the staff member can't be available and it's directly related to their department, and should the question come up as to what may or may not be able to be done, we're not able to do our job, and that's something that staff takes great pride in. They understand that they're here to serve the citizenry and the council. But based on my observation of, you know, not being the city manager for a little while, and being the assistant city manager, and kind of observing what has taken place, I think maybe that's how this issue got clouded a little bit, because of questions, the pileup for whatever reason, and then the unbearing of those questions. And I know staff has been working very hard to try to work their way through some of these questions that have accumulated, and they want to answer those questions. And I appreciate the statements that have been made by council that, hey, they respect staff's time, they don't want to direct staff, they don't want to generate work, they just want to have an opportunity to speak. So I think that that process has already been codified, and that's, that councilmembers can put items on the agenda here. But again, with, as a courtesy to the city manager, having the city manager, providing the city manager the opportunity to say, hey, I know you want to place this on the agenda, but I really think it would be better if we have staff experts that are available on the subject, available for that meeting. I think that's something that's, it's an important consideration as a courtesy of staff as well. So, I don't know if that helps, but hopefully it does.
I don't see any other comments or questions. Let's leave it on the agenda for next council meeting as a way to follow up and to chat about procedure and process for action items.
Will do. We'll look at your draft, and also, if you could just take a look at that city manager newsletter item, see if that makes sense to you, too.
Sounds good. Moving right along, looks like we're on future agenda items, meetings and workshops. February 10th at 1:30 at Beckett's. Looks like a few councilmembers are meeting with a few state representatives. City Manager, yeah, City Manager Fitzpatrick.
Just if I could speak to that a little bit, since I'm providing a little history for everyone tonight on other topics, I'll just say that this was a common practice in the past, for councilmembers to meet with state legislators. I think Paul brought this up, because he recollects doing that, and you've had a lot of dialogue about state issues. So I think that it's not uncommon for council to do that. The reason that staff thought it was important to put on the agenda is because it was originally organized by Councilmember Esslinger, and I think Councilmember Larson has agreed to participate in that. The idea that this is going to be a meeting of the entire council, it would be helpful if the council can confirm that. So then we can notice it that way, just like we do with every other meeting. There's been some dialogue, you know, earlier in the discussion in the meeting today about office hours and having individual, you know, meetings. I don't think that was the intent, but Councilmember Esslinger can certainly weigh in. I think it's really based on his recollection of how those meetings took place with elected officials at the state level in the past. So just looking for your direction on how you'd like to have this structured.
I'm going to do what I don't normally do. I'm going to jump in before Councilmember Flohm here. So this one's a bit frustrating for me, because to interim City Manager Fitzpatrick's point there, meetings with other governmental entities or governmental representatives is a common thing that we've done over the years. And if this council wants to have a meeting, a council meeting with either any or all of our elected representatives that serve this area, that's a great thing for this whole body to do. For the whole body to do. And to have a, to have topics that are meaningful to the community, that City Hall initiates with our representatives. To me, and it's not going to get taken well, but to me, this is, a group of councilmembers would like to get together and not break open meeting laws, so they're hosting a special meeting with some staff, state representatives. Not in City Hall, not recorded for posterity, not accessible electronically to those who are unable to attend. So this is, this is a bit frustrating that this was the path that this one took. We in the past have met with school district and talked about items of mutual consideration and mutual beneficial relationships. We've done the same thing, I remember, the last one we did was probably during COVID. I remember sitting at home on the Brady Bunch screen with state representatives. So the idea to meet with them is a great one, and I invite any representative to come here to interact with us on a Tuesday night as well, to report back, and always would be welcome here, but a little frustrating with the process on this one. Councilmember Flohm.
This is a question more for city staff and Attorney Lawrenson, as well as interim City Manager Fitzpatrick. I plan on attending this meeting. I have a difference of opinion with the mayor about this. I respect his opinion, I understand his opinion, but this is something that I would very much like to attend myself in the interest of the multiple citizens who have reached out to, to see if we can have a meeting like this. My question is, from an open meetings law standpoint, if three members of council want to get together and this is properly noticed, and we plan on fielding questions from the general public, is that legal?
You, the devil's in the details, you noted. If you are properly noticing it.
Which this seems like it is.
That's why we have the agenda.
Yeah.
And why it's on, so that if there are other items that aren't listed, you can tell us that, you know, hey, this, we're also going to talk about whatever.
Right, because that seems legal to me. It seems perfectly legal to me. There are certain several city meetings with committees that are not recorded. The Landmarks Commission, that's not recorded, but the minutes.
Recording is not a requirement.
Exactly. That's my point, is what I'm trying to make, is that the recording is not necessarily a part of state law that we need to comply with, as long as it's properly noticed and we have minutes and an agenda. I feel like it is. But I just want to double check with you that that is the case. And it seems like that you've answered in the affirmative. So to me, this seems like a legal avenue that is perfectly clear. If, as long as this is noticed properly and fielding questions from members of the public that have asked for this meeting to happen, I think is within council's right to do, specifically certain members of council. However, I don't think the intent here is to develop policy with half of council, essentially, detractors of this would call this a caucus. That's not the point. The point is to answer questions from the public and essentially hold a town hall with our state representatives. So I appreciate your answer on that. Thank you.
Congressman Larson.
And I can just, I will defer to Paul at some point, but, Mr. Mayor, to your point, I never understood this being a kind of end around. My understanding was this is a meeting that Paul had set up for people to listen to, and that's great, and that's well within his purview. I offered up a space because he can't just notice it here on his own, because he can't. That's not how it works. If Jacob wants to attend, then we need to notice the meeting, because there'll be three of us there. But I don't think anybody would disagree that we would rather do this right here at the time that works for everybody, because that'd be great as well. That's just not how it started. So I don't think there was any intentional end around here, or any intention to leave anybody out. My understanding was that the agenda came, and maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, too, the agenda and the reason this exists for us to discuss now is because there will likely be three of us there. So it needs to be noticed.
That was my understanding. There was likely to be at least three of us.
Same way when we go meet and greet something, same way when we go to the chamber event, same way when all those things happen. So I don't think there was anything out of the ordinary here. And I'm thankful that Paul took the time to arrange this with those officials, because I hadn't, and I want to be there, so I offered up space to do so. But again, if we all want to be there, and if we can do that here, and let staff, I'm not going to direct staff, because we just talked about that, too, but if we could do it here instead, that's even better. And if everybody can come, that's way even better.
Congressman Esslinger.
I'll defer to the acting city manager, I think he's got a.
Go ahead.
And staff is happy to organize it, get it ready, and notice it, and make sure that we're, you know, if there's any issues, like if somebody wants to attend the meeting and there's some ADA issue, you know, we will take care of all that for council. So I don't want council to misunderstand, I just wanted to make sure that if we're going to do this for the entire council, just provide that direction and we'll take care of everything for you. And I would like to attend the meeting, too, if I could.
Congressman Esslinger.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know how to tackle this. As I stated before, I do listen to a lot of people, they come up with ideas, and I like to act on those ideas. So I had the idea of meeting with a couple different representatives, the two that we have here in Oshkosh, and I thought, well, it'd be a great opportunity to invite anybody that wanted to come. The more people, the better. So, of course, I don't do anything without asking an attorney first. I called the city attorney and explained what I wanted to do, and she instructed me that it would have to be noticed. So that, the. So that, there was, there's no, how can I say this? There's no malintent, there's no trying to get around the council, there's no nasty deed trying to be done here. This is a representative, shame on him for listening and wanting to solve some problems, that wants to get with a couple of people at the state that have more power than I do, that may have a governor's ear and senator's ears and whatever else, to discuss issues. And by the way, I want to make perfectly clear, we're talking about two different meetings tonight. The one meeting, I was talking about council member Larson and I, is for the tax evaluation that we just had. That, that's one meeting, that's not what we're talking about now. This meeting, and I'll review what I informed the city attorney, speaking about the rules for obtaining nomination signatures for running for office, and I'm not going to get into these, these are just the issues. Eliminating property taxes, local gas tax to fund road projects, we can get rid of the wheel tax, moving April elections into November, and allowing local governments to require residency for their city managers if they have that form of government. So, those are the issues that, and I think, especially in today's age, people are tired of doing the same thing over and over and over again and expecting different results. And they're tired of elected officials saying that they want to listen, and then when you ask them to do something, they'll say, I'll look into it. And anytime you hear an official, an elected official say, I'll look into it, don't wait by the phone, because they're not calling you back. This is, again, the intent is to express my opinions on things that maybe we can do, just get some thoughts formulated, maybe some, and I know the state has done this before, they've held committees where they've brought up issues where we can start, and I hate this quay, but think outside the box, do things differently, actually represent people the way we need to be represented. But I will say, I find it interesting, we were talking about council member Larson and I wanting to notice when we're going to have the meeting regarding the taxes, and I was scolded that in no way, shape or form should that be on the agenda. Should not do that, yet this meeting's on the agenda. And it's not with the council. So, again, we're talking about consistencies, we're consistently inconsistent. And if, again, if I'm a resident and I'm watching this, I'm thinking, I don't know if I want to vote for these people anymore. I really don't know. So, this meeting, and thank Mr. Larson for having it, I'm going to say this, but he owns Beckett's, we're having it there, not so he can make any money, or there's no issues with that. But just so he and I and other council, I hope everyone shows up, I hope, I know we can't do it, but 100 people show up, 200 people. Just because we, we got to start doing things differently, we got to start listening to people. There are good ideas out there, I don't have them. I don't know, some of the questions sometimes. But having these meetings, I think is a good idea. And so this meeting is, just for the edification of the public, it is at Beckett's on February 10th at 1:30 PM, and I think we have the room for, what, about two and a half, three hours, Chris?
Something like that.
Okay. And so I invited Representative Nate Gustafson and Representative Lori Palmieri. Lori Palmieri did say she was going to make it. Nate Gustafson, unfortunately, I don't think he's going to make it. I hope he changes his mind. I would gratefully, would love to see him there. I think he's got a lot of good ideas. So, and anyone else that wants to come. So, it's really a pretty simple thing, I want to listen, and maybe someone wants to tell me I'm crazy. It's happened before. So, February 10th, 1:30 at Beckett's. And with that, that's, that's my speech.
Deputy Mayor.
I actually love that there's a intergovernmental meeting happening, I have no problems with that. I have a couple of questions, and I guess the first thing is, I would rather it be up here, to prevent any illusion or perception of inappropriateness. You know, I, I don't think there is, I don't, but I just don't want there to be any chance of perception of that. The things that I have questions on, because this is new to me, I didn't serve, like you did, Mr. Esslinger, when, when apparently this was pretty common, is, I don't want it to be perceived as though if only three of us are, you know, are there, then we are speaking for council while we're talking to one of the state representatives. That, that's a very real concern for me, that could be perceived as that, you know, that representative is there talking to members of council, but they're getting only two or three opinions. I don't know how to safeguard against that. I don't know if either of you can help with that, or is, if there's guidance for that, or how we-
Okay.
Yeah, I think that, that's another reason why I think it would be good to get direction from the entire council, that you want to have a meeting with elected officials. So then, there's no misunderstanding. If, if only two council members can attend, or three, then, you know, they're going to convey their thoughts, but I would think, based on my interactions with other elected officials that work at the state level, they're going to know that, hey, not all council members are here, these are the thoughts of the people that are attending. I don't know if this would be, it's not, it's not clear that this is the will of the council, and this is what they'd like to do. So it's another reason why, if it's formalized that this is a meeting of the council, it helps dissipate some of that questioning or uncertainty.
Right.
And the purpose of the meeting is to try to share information, but also try to effectuate change. And I know council has talked about that quite a bit, with some of the frustration that they have with some of the things that exist at the state level.
Right. And that'd be my concern, is I don't want Carl thinks to come across as council thinks.
Sure.
You know, the other question I have is, at what point do we have a quorum requirement if we notice it? Like, how does that work with the meeting then not being able to happen if there's not a quorum of council members? I just don't understand how that-
Well, you're not taking action.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Council member Stevenson. I'll be council member Flom.
Let's, let's simplify this and just say, I'm okay if we have it here. I don't know exactly what, do you guys maybe want to describe the format a little bit more?
I think, I think you're looking at, it was Paul's idea, and it's a good one, and because it wasn't a formal action, it's not here, but I would rather it be here also. I'm right there with you.
Is it like, I mean, I prefer to not sit at the dais as well.
What's that? I missed the question.
Well, I prefer to maybe not sit at the dais as well, if we can get, if we're having state representatives. I'm imagining we're all at like a table talking, is that what we're, what the format looks like?
Generally, do you mind if I-
No, go for it.
Generally, in the past, it's been more of a, it's a workshop style, where, yes, there's an agenda, there's a couple topics, and we have a set period of time that we don't go past. And it's a free-flowing, more workshop-style discussion. And then we, you know, we move on to topics at a, at a certain point. Not necessarily, you know, resolution or any action, I'm thinking back to maybe the school board meetings where we all sat in one room around a big table they hosted last time, and we talked about items of mutual, that were mutually beneficial.
Right.
And received input and, and didn't give guidance, it was just, it was really information, sharing and gathering kind of stuff. But to work, you know, show that we can work together.
Yeah, good. I mean, I guess that, that's kind of what I was imagining. So, yeah, I, if we want to, I think, just for clarity, I, I love that you offered up your space, but I do like to have it in, if we're going to have meetings like this in kind of a public forum. I also, Paul, do really like the topics we're talking about. These are ones that I think have been, kind of kicked around, that I think we should talk together. My only question is, so this is just for state officials, we're not inviting other public officials?
I just, I want someone to clear something up for me, I find this ironic. I want to have a meeting with the citizens to talk about their tax bill, and I was told this is not the place to do it.
And I guess I'll-
And I want to have a meeting to talk to state officials about how they represent our local people, and I'm told to do it, now this is the place to do it. I'm completely confused on where we're supposed to do this. So if we talk to state officials, it should be here, but if we want to talk to residents, it should be somewhere else.
I think that comes down to the appetite of what the other councillors want to do, and they said they don't want to do the first, the former, and they do want to do the latter, and that's okay.
And that's, and I'm going to take my time back. That's specifically why I asked what the format was. If it was a roundtable, we're talking with other elected officials, I like that format. We're, we're not having action, we're just talking about items that could mutually benefit us. I think the issue that, that a few of us took with the, the public forum of the taxation stuff, I think it's, it's a little bit of us getting on our pulpit, saying, we tried to help you, look at all these things, I'm a good council member, Esslinger, but I didn't want to overpromise to those people. And I don't think it's the right forum to tell people how the taxation was, I think we're all a little upset about it, right? I think that's where I'm coming from, I don't think it's the right forum, I don't think it's the right medium to digest that. I think if we communicate in other ways, if we put out a video, if we have staff put out a really good message on this is the reasons why those things happen, I would love to see those things burst. If those things happen, and you have a huge public outcry that says, Joe, you got it wrong, nobody watched your video, they didn't listen to our staff, I'm more than willing to take that back and say, maybe a public forum is worthwhile. But I would like to talk about the other solutions we have first, before we constantly just have public forums. This is, I think, very different than that. This is us meeting with other elected officials and discussing mutual items of interest, which I think we should probably start doing anyway.
Council member Flom, were you on here, did I accidentally clear you out before?
No, I took myself off, but now I have some ideas and thoughts. I guess for me, you know, if you want to have the meeting here with other state officials, that's fine, I don't really care where it is. But at the same time, I do think, you know, if one, or two, or three, or all of council wants to have a discussion about tax bills, I know that there's some differences of opinion about that, I understand that, but if we want to have that discussion, I think it's within our purview to have that discussion. And I know that we had a whole, a whole kind of long winding back and forth about that earlier. I, just for me, I still think it's important that if we want to have that open discussion about tax bills, that we're allowed to have that, and that it's properly noticed, that it complies with open meetings laws. But people have been asking, at least myself, and, and I'm sure a number of you, we've been talking about this all the time, so I think it will be helpful just doing my job as a member of council. However, for these specific items here, I don't care where you have it. I mean, whatever's the most accessible place, but I still think having a meeting about the tax bills, at least if some members of council, like if I want to have a listening session by myself, I'm going to go do that. If we can't come to an agreement here, I'm just going to go do that by myself, because clearly we can't really come to a consensus on this. And if I want to invite other members of council, and if that complies with open meetings laws, I will make sure that I will take those steps to do so.
Council member Larson.
I agree. I mean, it's two different things. And Paul, I get what you're saying, and you're right that it's a little interesting, but I think it does come down to, this is good news that everybody wants to be at this-
I think it's great news.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So I think it's fantastic that Fitz has offered to have it here, that's way better than the venue over there. We made it be fun to drink and listen to those people talk about things, we might need it. But beyond that, I mean, the appetite of everybody to do this, and Matt, again, I don't want you to think that anybody was trying to go around anybody's back to do that, because I don't think that's the case at all. But I think the way this came up is great, and we all agree that that's something we want to hear from and talk to people about, and doing it here would be fantastic. And if the other one isn't people's appetite, that's also okay, because we can do those things on our own, that's great.
Mr. Fitzpatrick, I know I jumped over your button pressing there a little bit-
I just wanted to offer that if you do want to have it here, 404 and 406 are available during that time. And just to give you a little more background on how this has worked in the past, there has been kind of a, it hasn't been the council on the dais and other people, you know, below, it's been usually in like a 404 format, or in a table, and then there's been a good healthy exchange between local elected officials and then state primarily. And I think it got a little vigorous, you know, I can recall over time with some of our local representatives, and I think because of that, we just stopped having those meetings. I think the, the state officials didn't feel like it was going to be productive, because it was just kind of one-sided, kind of like a complaining session, and, you know, what are you going to do for us? And there wasn't the healthy dialogue that this council, I think, enjoys and is, is very good at. So, I think, otherwise, this has been a common occurrence, and, and I know Paul remembers that, and I know Matt does too. So it's not something that's out of the ordinary.
The, the meetings did at times become contentious and/or political in nature, and that's, that's a problem that is real, and that council has to make sure that they try to, you know, navigate appropriately. Council member Flom and then I just have one, one final.
Yeah, I would just jump on that, I think it's incumbent upon us to act like adults. We're elected to act like adults, and I think everybody here is more than able to have a good discussion with our state legislators, and I think those meetings never should have ended, I wasn't on the council at that point in time. But, look, I mean, we are all going to have differences of opinion. There are, there's one Republican state senator, one Republican assemblyman, one Democrat state assemblywoman, and one Democrat state senator that represents a city. And so, we should be able to sit down and have discussions that affect city policy that don't have to be political in nature. Obviously, some of it will be, that's just the nature of the beast, that's how it's going to happen. This is a nonpartisan board up here, but the, the state legislature is, is different. So, for me, I don't think these meetings ever should have stopped, and I know, you know, I can't really say anything to that now, because that's what happened then, but I think it's healthy, I know that there are members of the legislature who have wanted to have these, as in some form of coffee or whatnot, or the chamber does a meeting, but frankly, I don't think that's enough. I think these should be regular meetings, and if they could test you, they could test you fine, but, you know, we're elected and entrusted by the public to act like rational people, to have these discussions and come up with a solution. At least to try. So, I think we should go for what worth of this.
As for the agenda, typically, when these meetings are, have been had, the full council at least provides input on agenda topics that are of mutual interest, and then that was worked out with, you know, whoever we were meeting for, for that time. Does council want to talk, does all of, every single council member want to talk about all five of these items? Because that, to me, in general, if the common council, the full council's putting its weight behind something and saying, we are meeting because we want to take valuable time and meet with somebody, I just don't understand what, for example, bullet point one, doesn't seem like it's something of, of use between a city government and our state representatives. I go back to a previous discussion, any council member can have a discussion with anybody at any time for any reason, any single council member. You want to meet with somebody, you want to meet with a large group, go ahead. We are governed by state laws, you can't have more than two of us in a room, or it starts violating laws. As much as that may annoy people, you can't do it. So, for me, this, this doesn't look like a professional discussion with our state representatives about matters of interest to the government of Oshkosh, and then by extension, its, its citizens. So, there's a couple of things on here that are, are, would be good discussion topics in general, but if this is just information gathering, the full body doesn't need to get to meet to get information from an elected official. Pick up the phone, have a coffee. But if we want to have a productive session, this should be three or four at the most, and it should be about an hour and a half in length, and that is a product, potentially a productive meeting amongst the council, and whatever city staff is now going to be potentially participating or not, because generally, where we go, they are here as well. So, those are my little additional thoughts.
Fitz, you need direction on this, like now, right? Obviously?
Yep. Be helpful. Yes, thanks.
I'm fine with the agenda as drafted, and I mean, that's what we're looking for, you don't need, we don't need formality at this point.
Well, I would, I would just, since you're asking, I would just say, if you guys can agree on this agenda, that these are all the topics that you're going to talk about, and then you got to stick to these, just like a regular meeting, you know, you can't just talk about anything you want, just as a reminder.
Or if there's something someone wants to add, we need to know that-
You got to do it now.
So you can add it.
Yep. And I do have another comment about the agenda, and I don't mean to rain on anybody's parade, but, and I don't think it was intended to rain on anybody's parade, listing the item, but the item about the residency for the city manager, we don't have our city manager in place right now. There was some dialogue at a previous meeting about concerns associated with that, and I would hate to have our city manager that is, has been hired, who's watching this meeting right now, I'm fairly certain-
Hundred percent.
-to think that that item is a reconsideration of what you discussed previously. So, other than that, I don't really have any other concerns with any other topics on the agenda.
Council member Flom.
One that I would like to see if, if we're doing this, our DOR revaluation rules. I think that's something that everybody wants to at least have a discussion with our state reps in the room about, the fact that we couldn't use our 2023 revales when DOR rejected our 2024 revale, I think that's really- I think that's really important. The fact that they used an equalized value math problem. We do assess value. They hold the answer key, and then they don't tell us what it is. I think that's something that's worth discussing. It would be my hope, and I know that Councilman Nichols, he's not here tonight, but I know that he's expressed potentially a resolution to send to Madison that this body would vote on directing them to, to work on that. I think if we can get them in a room and discuss that with them, that would be something that I would approve of.
That's a, that's a great topic of discussion with our state representatives, absolutely. Councilmember Stevenson?
Yeah, I love adding that topic to it. What was the thought behind the rules obtaining nomination signatures? What were we going to do with that?
Well, depending on what you're running for, as we all know, we have to get a certain amount of signatures to be put on the ballot. My belief is that if you are already, if you, if you are already in that office, well, let me back up. I think the reason to go out and get the signatures is to show, first of all, that you're putting forth the effort to do that, and you have some limited support from the community, that, that they're going to put some faith in you into that whatever elected position. Well, if you're already in that position, you've met that criteria. So what's the point of someone that's already in that office going out and proving what they've already proven? So if, I don't know, to get rid of the standard for someone that's already been on, in their elected position, or less of a threshold, and then if you're running for county offices, 500 signatures, I think is kind of pretty onus. And I'd like to see either getting rid of the system or massaging it in some way, shape, or form. And again, I'm not saying I have the answers to any or all of these questions. This is just a purpose of saying, hey, that's, that's a good idea. Or no, this is why we do it, and I want to keep it this way, and that's the way it goes. So this is, this is to kind of get the juices flowing and get, get some ideas.
Okay. So I guess that answer, I was, the, the way I read it was like we were going to be explaining what the, what the process was. It's more of a discussion on-
Well, I guess, I kind of did explain the process. In order to try to change it, you have to understand it. But in, in regards to this city manager residency thing, in no way, shape, or form is this to reflect on something that we've signed or agreed to or whatever. This is, I guess, moving forward of, because it, it used to be, as Mr. Fitzpatrick knows, in the past, this was, this is doable, and it has changed. And my personal opinion, I think it's changed for the worst. So I wanted to express that to the, the individuals who represent me at the state. And they can disagree with me, and that's fine. I just wanted to make that statement and see what, if there's any political will to change that. If so, how? If not, why? And the other ones on here, I think are kind of self-explanatory. Well, you know, the, the gas tax, we went round and round, and we have the wheel tax, and we had other alternatives, and we have the state offices, they love to give local control. I wish they'd like to prove that a little bit more than they do. I've talked about a, a gas tax and get rid of the special assessments and get rid of the wheel tax altogether. Again, just a ground floor idea, maybe best idea in the world, maybe the worst. But just so people can start thinking about thinking these things through, and maybe that springs some, something else up. So I think that kind of covers it, maybe not. I don't know if anyone else has any other thoughts?
You still have anything? Councilmember Stevenson, otherwise I'm going to-
Uh, no, I guess we can wrap this up. It seems like, yeah, we, it seems like a long agenda.
Well, a couple of years are going to go very, very fast. I mean, there's really not much to discuss. My gas, my, my gas, my guess is the gas tax thing will probably take some time. Oh, and then moving the elections, I'm thinking the city clerk, I know the past city clerk, I brought this up with her. She thought that was a fantastic idea, number one, because we have a hard time getting people to be at the polls, to do the functions that we need to do. We budget many, many dollars for this. In these April elections, if we get a 15% voter turnout, we're supposed to jump for joy because that's fantastic, which means 85% didn't care. In November elections, we have a much, much higher turnout. So, and I, and the, the negative to this is it's in a state statute, or a state, help me out here, Lynn. It's in the state. The state said, okay, that this is the way it has to be. And so it has to go through two readings of the, of Congress, and it has to be approved, and then it has to go to referendum. It's an onus task, getting it changed. But again, I think, one that, once you explain why, for my opinion, once you explain why it should be changed, I don't know if that gets any traction or not. But again, some of these things are going to take some work. But that's why we are elected, because we want to work. And I, I'm just, I'm, I'm sick and tired of hearing elected officials keep talking about how, when they're running, yep, I'm going to change it, and I'm going to listen to you, and I'm going to do this, and I'm going to do that. And then they get elected, and you don't see them until about six months before they want to get elected again. And they've done nothing. So, you know, I got a mouth and I use it a lot. And so some of these things might be as dumb as the day is long, but this is how I feel. And this is why I want to have these meetings, so people know exactly what the deal is.
Mr. Mayor, if I just may, the point I want to make about the revaluation rules is I'm trying to kind of knock out two birds with one stone here because of the property tax numbers that came in in the most recent tax bill that mostly had to do with the state revaluation mandate. And if there are going to be members of the public there, present, observing this meeting, that that would help them understand the rules from their state legislators, which is the entire reason why a lot of people would like to come to this meeting. So if it's a, I'm not really asking for permission. I, I think this is something we can talk about, but I'm just trying to knock out two birds with one stone here because of the fact that we can't discuss, apparently can't discuss property taxes in this type of setting, that because there are certain quorum rules and whatnot. So before I go off on my own and have a office hours at a coffee shop in town here, it would be nice if I could have the state representatives in the room try to address that to any members of the public who may be interested in attending.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Just to help, Councilmember Floman, I think I understand what he's asking for. But also with respect to Councilmember Nichols, who isn't here, he brought this subject up and asked staff and city manager rolloff, I think, to look at the idea of talking to elected officials and conveying our concerns associated with the revale. So just so we're clear, Councilmember Floman, is that what you're carrying forward? What Councilmember Nichols previously requested?
I think two things can be true at the same time. I know he's working on a slightly, obviously, he's not here. I'm not speaking for him. He's working on a slightly different track.
And we, we understand what his request is.
Yeah. And then for me, I just want an agenda item about the DOR revaluation process so that we can hear it from our state reps, who may actually get some info from DOR that maybe we haven't heard, that we, the public may find helpful, so that they can understand that, that this is primarily a state issue, and there's only so much the city can do about this. I think it's important that we discuss that at this meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Stevenson? We need to get wrapping up here soon. I in no way wanted to stop us from like talking about taxes. If you, yeah, yeah. And if, and if we even wanted to say DOR slash tax situation or something like that, I, I think that's perfectly fine for us to give a talk with our elected officials on our experience with working through this, this very difficult taxation period. So, I mean, if that does the two birds, one stone thing, I'd love it. So I, I think that maybe gives us a little bit of, a little bit of middle ground between, between the two parties that we're kind of debating over how we're going to get this taxation information out there. So I, I think if we want to put that on there, let's do it.
To, to try to wrap this up, hopefully this won't throw a massive wrench into anything, but it might. I'd like to suggest to council that we strike the first bullet point, rules for obtaining nomination signatures running for office. To me, this meeting is, would be between us and our government, our state representatives. This should be about the good of this body, the good of the, our local government, as well as the impacts it has on our people. And unfortunately, running for office does not do anything for this body, the local government or its people. That's an electioneering type of activity. So I'd like, I'd like to just strike that one, because it's, it's not beneficial to the, to the city government. I think moving the April election topic, I think that's a, that's an operational, excellent operational discussion to, to express to our state representatives of the, the challenges that local government has, and that, that would be, that could be a beneficial thing. And that'd be a great topic, as well as a few of the others. I don't like the residency requirement one either, but I'm asking if, if there's council-
I will second your very long-winded motion, so that we can put it on the floor for discussion.
To strike that, that first one. I'm going to, I'm going to not do notities. I'm just going to poll. We'll just do a very quick poll.
Mayor, if I could just-
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure.
With all due respect, this is not a council sanctioned meeting. This is a meeting that I had to put together.
This now is a council sanctioned meeting.
Well, no, it's not. No, it's not.
Yes, it is.
This is a meeting I put together. I called the city attorney. I told her what I wanted on the agenda. This isn't for discussion.
It is.
This is, no, it's not.
This is a meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council-
No, it is not.
Then I suggest you have a one or two person meeting.
Is this officially a meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council, this meeting?
As I understand it, the rest of the council members have agreed they want to meet as an entire council.
Okay. Then it, then if that's true, then if that's true, what I'm going to do respectfully is I'm going to go forward with this meeting, and I'm going to meet with these individuals, and I don't want any other council members there.
That is entirely within your work.
We'll be done with it. Because these are the topics I want to talk about, and I want to talk about them. I'm not asking permission from anyone if I can talk about these topics. It's ridiculous.
It's not ridiculous in the context-
It is ridiculous, Matt.
Mr. Esslinger?
If you want to have a meeting with these people and talk about what you want, go for it.
I think that's the point you're missing.
No, I'm not missing it. This is what I want to talk about. And I have to ask you if I can talk about this?
I think that's the point of clarity here, is that we, this body has decided we want to make it like a full council thing, so now since we're putting-
That's fine. I don't even, but I don't want to be told what I can talk about.
And you can certainly have a meeting on your own. You can keep this meeting. There, there will be likely a separate meeting then at, at City Hall with the entire body. And this entire body does have to put it together an agenda. And again, I, I understand, I, I fully support you wanting to talk about what you want to talk about. I, I get it. I, I've met with state representatives and said, hey, these are some issues I've seen from an elected official perspective. You guys should work on this. And you are more than willing to do that. But I think when this body decides that we're going to have a public forum, and we're going to have a joint governmental meeting, we, we do put together an agenda, and we all decide what's on it.
Then I'm, I'm not going to have a public meeting. I'm going to, I'm going to meet with these individuals on my own. I guess, Mr. Larson, out of respect for you, you asked to, to be at this meeting. If you want to still do that at, at Beckett's, then it will not be a formally noticed meeting.
Either way, great. And I mean, both is fine. I mean, I'm, I'm on board for all these things. I think the agenda items are great. And Paul, of course, you can meet with those people on your own. I'll still offer the space to do it, because I think it's a valuable tool, and I like the fact that you put it together. So I think that's wonderful. I also think it's great that all of us want to be at a meeting like that, and having it here is wonderful, too.
I agree.
So I'm, I'm on board with all of it. So I think for the sake of going home at some point in time of the day, we need to figure out what goes on, if this is the same meeting, if yours is different, if it's this date. And then we do need to decide what's on the agenda, because we do, for this one, for the one that happens here with everybody, because that's how the rules work. But yours, I will gladly still host. I will gladly still be there, because two of us can be there.
Right.
And then you can ask those folks anything you want to. That's well within your purview.
Then that's what I'm-
And nobody's trying to tell you can't do that.
Do I need to change anything then, Lynn?
Nope.
The rest of this body has to now agree to, that it doesn't want to participate in a council, full council meeting at that date and time here.
I think we still do, right? Sorry to interrupt you, but-
Dayton-
Yeah, yeah.
That the council is not going to participate, the full council will not participate in this, in this meeting of two council members with their elected state representatives. If this body would like to meet, and I think it's a good idea, if this body would like to meet in its entirety with their state representatives, all of them, including our state senator, would be also a good addition. We can give that direction. We can have the discussion, give that direction to city staff, to have them set up a time that's, that's agreeable to all parties and a, and a noticed draft, or a noticed agenda that's also agreeable to all parties. That's a, that's a fine thing to do, so. Hopefully Deputy Mayor is going to wrap this up for us.
I'm just going to add this very shortly. I don't know if we're meeting or not, or what's going on. But I, in any agenda that's going to be had with the state representatives, I don't know how housing is not on it, because it is a huge issue that is something that they can affect with us. And that when we do have that, I want to see housing on that.
So let me make the suggestion. Councilmember Esslinger, have your, have your chat with the council, the city representative, excuse me, state representatives, council. We will reconvene on this topic, maybe at the next council meeting, maybe the next one after that. And to set up a time and place to meet with our state representatives away from this-
Perfect.
At a agreeable agenda on topics that are mutually beneficial.
Absolutely.
Do we need to make the vote?
We do not.
Okay.
No, we did not take any votes, and we do not need to. This was a, this was city staff needing to clarify what was really going to be happening on February 10th.
So just so I'm clear, Lynn, then, myself and Councilmember Larson, or if there, two council members can come to this meeting at Beckett's on February 10th at 1:30, correct? Without us getting into a walk-in quorum?
Generally, two of you can. And again, you have to watch that you are not getting into a walk-in quorum. If you turn around, and as you leave that meeting, you're texting the other council members and talking.
Right.
You have to be cognizant of that.
Right.
So if I would like to attend, I can?
No.
If you would like to attend, then we're into that noticing-
That's exactly where we started.
Yep.
So, yeah, we're back to kind of where we started.
Yep.
Let's just leave it at, for the sake of clarity, Paul, it's your meeting. You can invite the general public. It's at a location that's noticed here, and I won't be there either, but it's yours with those folks, because there are issues you want to talk about. I think that works perfectly. Then we're, then we're crystal clear on what the process is involving everybody. Does that make more sense? Mr. Mayor?
I think Councilmember Esslinger can have his meeting at February 10th, 1:30, or any other day and any other time, at any location of his choosing.
Correct.
With any state representatives he likes, and with a maximum of one other council member. It would not violate any meeting laws, any state statutes, or any council rules. And in the future, this council will give direction to organize a session with our state representatives. With that, it's time to move on. We have a workshop of housing programs, February 11th, 5:00 p.m. This is prior to a council meeting. Any information that city staff is going to look to share, please make sure we have that in advance, since we're time limited that evening to 5:45.
Right. I spoke to Community Development Director Nyforth about this, and she wants to provide some preliminary information that she's assembled. And it's not designed to be too packed, because I know council has work to do after that. So it's her intent to send the information out in advance, so you have some time to take a look at it, so we can expedite that session for you.
Sounds good. If there's no other future meeting agenda items workshops, any councilor announcements or statements? I see none. City manager announcements, statements, Mr. Fitzpatrick. The rest is yours.
There's only a few items that we have under city manager announcements and statements. There's some licensing purchasing for our email system that we have. There's some professional services for the Oshkosh Senior Center. Also want to let folks know that the strategic plan dashboard's been updated for the fourth quarter. So that's available on the website for them to take a look at. And I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
I don't see any buttons being pressed with that. I'll take your motion in a second to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Meeting adjourned.